I will call us to order. Melissa, are we all squared away from your perspective?
Yes.
We know we have a few councilors getting dinner right now. But this evening, we have the pleasure of having the McMinnville Downtown Association present their annual report to the council. And we're doing this in a work session. And again, today being April the 23rd, 2019. And so I will call on Jenny Berg, the MDA Board President, to come and make that report. And I know we have many members of your board, so you might want to introduce them to the council. And we'll turn the time over to you, Jenny. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Do I need to give my address? Are you sure? 225 Northwest Adams Street? Okay. Yes, I would love to introduce the board members that I have here. I have -- the Downtown Association has an amazing board right now. And I wouldn't have made it through the last month without them. Actually, I'm going to have them introduce themselves. I like that, in case.
Good evening. I'm Justin Wyatt. I have the barberry. I think you need to go over.
I'm Casey Clark. I work at our store.
Danny Chisholm and I work with him.
I work in my yard.
Well, Kent, the big question is, are you for hire in other people's yard? Okay?
I am Heather lawyer. I own local so.
We have to have good clapping for good reasons here. So McMinnville Downtown Association Annual Report. You did receive the financials, and I'm going to make just a few quick comments about that that have been delightfully prepared for me by our treasurer, Jerry Hunter. One thing of note is that the MDA undertook a change from a cash basis accounting to accrual basis accounting and updated the accounting practices to better assess both particular time periods and events and programs, implementing a system of classes and departments to separate out attribute expenses and their associated revenue streams for events such as Farmer's Market and Concerts on the Plaza from general funds and administrative expenses such as the EID funding and member dues. And these improvements, while they will provide much more valuable and relevant financial information moving forward, have made it slightly more difficult to directly compare the most recent years with the past. Also, an independent accountant's review report has been submitted for 2018, which you have in your -- received in your addendum packet that I sent out to you, as well as 2016 and 2017, which apparently had not been sent to the finance department and are available for review. So in terms of our statement of financial position, cash is up slightly, accounts receivable are down, indicating a higher rate of collection of monies owed as of the end of September. Property equipment and improvements, net about the same, likely down a little bit due to depreciation. Gift certificates payable is up, reflecting paper gift certificates sold but not redeemed, which we see a fair amount of. As we no longer sell them and not all will be redeemed, some of this will eventually be written off and may be realized as income at a later date. We're working with accountants to make sure that that's done properly. Designated assets for operations reserve is being consumed by lease payments for office computers. The finance committee is currently reviewing other set aside needs for the Cozying House and for equipment. And I will say that membership dues show a decline, but past years included some income booked on potential members, even though many of those billings were very likely uncollectible, so therefore overstating income in the past. Current figures are more realistic and in line with historically collected dues from active members. Promotion revenues do not align line by line, but with the -- we're continuing to clean up our bookkeeping and accounting practices. And that's one of the things that has been of primary focus in this past year. So talking about 2018 and the highlights of 2018, not necessarily from that financial report, but just in terms of the work that has been done with the McMinnville Downtown Association. One of the programs that we're quite excited about is our new gift certificate program. It helped facilitate more than 300,000 -- three, sorry, 30,000 of annual spending in the local economy. And this past fall, we upgraded to a card-based system that is simpler for customers and cheaper for businesses. We used to take a 5% administrative fee for those gift certificates, and now the entire percentage goes to those businesses where the gift card is redeemed. And we also expanded our locally focused marketing. You know, one of the things that's sometimes asked about is, so the focus of the MDA, what would visit McMinnville? And one of the things that we have very much focused on is our local community and bringing our local community into the downtown. And we've launched a Find Yourself in Downtown, a year-long campaign focused on engaging the local population with downtown businesses and events. And the MDA-run events drew nearly $100,000 -- $100,000 potential customers to your front door in 2018, to front door of businesses. And our events and promotions saw an increased attendance and more profit for businesses. So those are things that are going on in 2018. I know that probably all of you have, you know, read the news about our executive director. And we have already developed a hiring committee. We have a really strong hiring committee. There's six different members of our board. And then we also have Heather Richards, Jeff Knapp, Scott Cooper, and Joya Goodrum on that hiring committee. So a lot of people that will be working closely with the new executive director. And we're also looking forward to what we refer to as the event season for the Downtown Association, and that's Farmer's Market starting next week. And then the UFO Festival, we look forward to that in May as well, and Concerts on the Plaza in the summer, as well as many other events. And Taylor Brisbane has been leading the charge wonderfully with that. Of course, we're also looking to renew the Economic Improvement District. And thanks to community leaders who started that Economic Improvement Assessment District in 1986, and to all the business and property owners, members, staff, volunteers, and others who've supported the McMinnville Downtown Association, we continue to successfully promote and enhance our historic downtown as the economic, social, and cultural heart of the community. Some of you may remember years ago when, at a library presentation, I brought library patrons to tell the story instead of me saying, "The library is so great. Let me tell you about the library." I brought in the people that actually feel that way, and I want to do the same here and now, not necessarily with people -- I didn't bring people off the street.
Unless anyone wants to say anything about this.
I saw everybody looking at somebody coming in. Anyway, but I do have quotes and, you know, awards that all of you are certainly aware of that McMinnville has received, and McMinnville in particular downtown and in particular Third Street, Main Street, has received. Of course, the Parade Magazine Best Main Street Finalist. And one of the quotes from that, "You know, there's something special about a main drag when locals refer to it as the community's living room. Third Street's the reason I chose to raise my family here." And Sunset Magazine named McMinnville one of the five best communities in the West. And they say, "Along with charming architecture, downtown McMinnville has been drawing young chefs and entrepreneurs. Its main drag, Third Street, just garnered a Great Street Award from the American Planning Association." And the American Planning Association says, "As the charming Main Street of historic downtown McMinnville, Oregon, Third Street offers a quintessential small-town experience. The street has been at the heart of creating a strong sense of community and the epicenter of downtown's historic and cozy aesthetic." And I would like to say that the McMinnville Downtown Association, with the support of the community, we look forward to continuing to create a magical downtown for McMinnville residents and visitors. Questions?
So let's open it up. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you for the good work in filling in and giving a great presentation. Much appreciated. And thank you also. I really liked that Concerts on the Plaza event. It's a really great event.
I'm a fan. And I believe, I think I see our city manager there on occasion as well. I think he might be a supporter.
Usually got two beers. A couple of questions. Reading through the report, the current balance of accounts receivables, 7,593. Is that running high? Or I always seem that there's a rolling balance. It seems high from my previous experience.
I'm going to call on any member of my board that wants to come up and save me while I also look at these finances here.
Okay. And I know that there's a weird accounting thing where all of a sudden, a bunch of memberships will flop onto that as accounts receivable and be this weird bloat, but it seems higher than what I remember from my time on the board.
One of the things in going from cash to accrual-based accounting
Right.
is that we sent out billing. And so that billing was sent out, and not all of it has been paid yet. So different businesses, particularly seasonally-driven businesses, may wait a few months and then write their checks. As Jenny mentioned, we wrote down some of the membership dues already, knowing that this person hasn't paid in seven years. They're not going to pay this year. And so we've already taken that step. But going from cash to accrual means we invoiced it all, and we're not recognizing it yet.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got a bigger receivable mainly because of that.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then in addition, there was kind of along the same lines, but in the terms of Economic Improvement District assets, seemed 21,565 was not yet recognized income from delinquent EID assets. Is there any?
My understanding of that is that's also something where it's a -- certain properties have chosen not to pay.
Okay.
And that, right, so it's been accruing, and that is a -- I may not have the exact correct language, but a lien on the property, so when the property is sold, then that money will be paid.
We have -- you guys have a lien on the -- okay.
Downtown Association.
The city does, okay. And then the only last thing I had was, especially in terms of thinking about as a new executive director's onboarded, and we've flirted with it prior in my time on the board, but areas in which the city can offer overlaps as far as our shared infrastructure or you guys using our infrastructure to benefit the Downtown Association, which doesn't have a ton of infrastructure. But areas in which you guys can identify that we could help, I think I'd be interested in entertaining. So as you guys search, you're welcome to -- I would encourage you to think of areas in which those would overlap.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one. I just have one question, which is just not understanding one of the line items. In your promotion revenues, downtown beautification is bringing in $7,700 a year, $7,800 a year. What is -- how is that a revenue -- what is that revenue stream?
Can you direct me to that again, Remy?
Yeah. Page three, revenues, and then it was one bold.
Somebody else is going to have to join me. This is -- I told you, they're a great board, and I clapped for them, so they have to come up and save me here.
Actually, a team back here informed me that it's the banners. And that's the income from the banners that hang down?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the beautification.
Got it. Thank you. That was my only question.
Comments or questions?
Just one comment. I think, and Zach, I know you're very active in terms of the public events that happen, the concert. I just really appreciate how much you all contribute to the vitality of our community. Seem to see the same people at all the same meetings, organizing the same events, and it's a real treasure, so thank you.
Thanks.
I do have another question. Is there talk of expanding the EID?
We certainly have talked about it, yes.
What's the process for expanding the EID?
It would be to get input from those property owners. And so it's a multi-year process, and as you know, we've been in
Transition.
transition for the last couple of years in terms of from one executive director to another. And so I think it's certainly something that we have been talking about for quite a few years and want to talk about. And I think now is actually a prime time, or not now, but in the next six months to a year, with the board that we have and the changes in McMinnville, certainly looking at that would -- is something that we're interested in doing, both expanding it and possibly increasing the request for funding that has not increased since 2007, I believe.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Adam.
Outside of the search for a new executive director and the EID expiration, what's the biggest challenges that you, as a board, feel you face downtown?
That's not enough. It feels like a lot right now.
No, I mean, that's a ton, but I mean, from an operational standpoint, I mean, those are the elephants in the room. But what are the things that we don't see from the level that we're at that you, as a board, talk about month in and month out as challenges?
I would say one of the things that came up at the board meeting this morning is volunteers, the need for volunteers, that, you know, we've got the Alien Parade that requires how many?
100.
100 volunteers just on a single day, and the Farmer's Market that week in, week out requires quite a few volunteers. And then, you know, the setting up the Concerts on the Plaza. So that certainly is, you know, and speaking to what Sal said in terms of you see the same people all the time, and you all know this as one of the challenges. And so we face that as well. And I would say that a lot of the same things that are -- that the city council faces as far as challenges when you look at downtown, so we face that in terms of, you know, in a way, not enough money and manpower to take care of all the things that we would like to take care of.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, let me --
I just want to make one comment. Did you see Jenny with her library director have a hall? She usually don't get a chance to see her when she's in the chair first now. It has been a difficult show. Word of this transition, any kind of transition in the organization. She's up in the corner. I just want to let you know that. I see her. Word, cheers. You should be proud of it.
Thank you, Kent.
Mayor.
Go ahead. Just from Mr. Taylor's edification, this is Lain Community College Laker Blue, an organization to which I'm related by tuition right now.
So are we done here?
Let me just share a couple of comments in closing this evening. Number one, thank you for your materials. I think the information on the quick fact -- facts on the EID, I think, was as good of a presentation, written presentation, that I've seen. It just, it solidifies your funding sources or a portion of your funding sources. I think it gives a good detail of what has been the backbone of the MDA for all these many years. Without that, you would not have the kind of success that you have. Secondly
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
May I, I just, because I feel like I would be remiss to not mention that Brad James, our previous executive director, had, he was the person that created that document. And while we're disappointed in not having him here anymore with us, he, much of the work that you see in front of you and that I have talked about is due to things that he did.
Thank you.
Clean things up. And thank you for letting me interrupt you to give him credit.
No, but I, that is a phenomenal document. And your finances, they're very easy to read and understand. I acknowledge those that are sitting in the room that are part of this board. You're passionate, hardworking, and you have a voice. And so from a city perspective, I so much appreciate the partnership that we've had with the MDA. And I look forward to that partnership as we bring on a new executive director and work hand in hand in doing the things that we need to do. I looked in this group, and I recognize a number of individuals that are sitting on committees that affect downtown, whether it be the streetscape for Third Street, Three Mile Lane. You guys are taking a very big role. I shared this with Jenny. The first opportunity I had to get involved in this community back in 1992, when I moved to town, was the MDA. And I took over as a treasurer from Rocky Wade. And let me tell you, those were the days when we didn't have the ability to have an accountant. So I was doing that on spreadsheets with a 10-key. Maybe not the 10-key, but it was on spreadsheets that we were doing that. And so I've had a vested interest in 27-plus years of watching the MDA. And with my role as a banker, I also had the opportunity to travel the whole Willamette Valley. And we have always, well, since 1992, been seen as one of the most effective downtown organizations in the state of Oregon, in the region, the northwest. I had a chance to serve on the Oregon Downtown Association Board and help create that many years ago. And so I had a reach that was much greater than just Oregon. And I'll tell you, that tradition continues today, much like the tradition that the city has for good governance, you guys being able to help partnership and keep the vibrancy of the downtown going. Take that to heart, okay? It doesn't come by pure luck. It's hard work. It's communication. And it's having this collectiveness of property owners, businesses, city, and all the other partners we have, whether it be the Chamber, whatever it may be. So again, I just share at this point, I'm excited where you're at, but I'm more excited where you're going to be going in the next couple of years as you continue to do the good things that you're doing. So any other thoughts? Go ahead.
Something. Being in construction and real estate, we talk to a lot of people who are moving into town and, again, acknowledging all of the work that you guys have done. Number of people who move here for that downtown, I can attest personally to the number of people who cite that downtown as the reason that they chose McMinnville. So, and I know it's hard, a lot, to keep local businesses thriving in that downtown. And these awards don't come close to capturing what happens behind the scenes to make sure that we have that, and we have that unique character, that we're not just another town that you can't recognize, right? And so thank you to everybody for that. I mean, I know that we all, the quality of life that we have is greatly enhanced, and we're attracting really committed people to this town because of that downtown, right? So thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Well, thank you, Jenny and the board. Thanks for this report. It keeps us up to date on what's happening, and we appreciate it so very much. So again, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We will move into city council in about five minutes, so we'll be right back with
Call those to the dais. I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 23rd, 2019 city council meeting and I will call us to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and we've asked Wendy to lead us in that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wendy. This evening, would just like to welcome, see, I see our landscape review committee almost in total here this evening and so it's good to see members of that committee. We know that we had a presentation earlier from the MDA and some of our board members are still here with that. So, again, welcome this evening. This evening, we're going to start off with a number of proclamations and proclamations come as the time of the year. And so I'm going to start with our first proclamation this evening and that is going to be a proclamation on Lemonade Day. And Joya, I'd have you come up representing the Chamber of Commerce and I will give some information on Lemonade Day.
No lemonade?
Yeah, we, we're gonna miss our, well, they may come.
Let me do it.
Okay. Well, we will have an opportunity later to do that on May the 4th, or, yeah, May 4th. Whereas Lemonade Day is a fun, free experimental learning program that was launched in Houston, Texas in 2007 and has grown from 2,700 kids in one city to 200,000 kids over 35 cities across America and Canada. And whereas there are 200 kids in McMinnville and surrounding community who have been learning how to be young entrepreneurs by opening and operating their own business, their lemonade stand. And whereas the community business leaders are supporting and encouraging these young entrepreneurs to be brave and to do big things. And whereas in, since its inception, Lemonade Day has provided access to the experience of business ownerships to youth from all walks of life who learn lifelong business skills and principles while learning how to make money, where they are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little. And we'll talk a little bit about that. Whereas the mission of this Lemonade Day is to empower today's youth to become tomorrow's entrepreneurs. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, State of Oregon, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 4th, 2019 as Lemonade Day in McMinnville. And we encourage, encourage all citizens to recognize and encourage the efforts of our kids as they learn about being young entrepreneurs while they open and operate their own businesses. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed, affixed to this document on the 23rd day of April 2019. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor, City of McMinnville. Joya? Congratulations.
A lot of lemonade. A lot, and it's such a fun event. I encourage everybody to come out, support our kids, give them an idea of what it means to be a business owner because we are trying to encourage them to become entrepreneurs as they get older. And it's a fabulous program, teaches them a lot of skills that they don't normally get. And we love it, we love the fact that the city supports it and of course, our businesses. And we thank everybody for coming out, May 4th, 10:00 a.m. There's 200 stands, so don't miss out on some lemonade and maybe a cupcake or two. Get your sugar fixed that day.
Well, I want to just mention one other piece and it was in the proclamation, but the kids earn a little bit for themselves. They earn, learn expenses and revenue, but most importantly, I think they've picked causes that they're going to donate to. And I, as I go around and, and Joya and I have an opportunity probably to visit at least 80% of the stands on the Saturdays, to listen to the stories, who they picked and why they picked to donate to nonprofits or to causes of need, I think is a lesson and a skill that's learned early in life that will stay with them for years to come. So, again, a great program. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing that we're going to be doing is Arbor Day. And so Jamie, if you'd come up representing the city. And I mean, why don't we bring up the members of the committee that are here? Tim and... Kelly and I have a little bit and Zach have a little opportunity to spend some time with this group. We love to sit in on their committee meetings. But whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and now is observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, they clean the air by absorbing 48 pounds of carbon dioxide every year per tree, prolonging life, producing life-giving oxygen and providing vital habitat for our wildlife. And whereas trees can moderate the average temperature in a city by 10 degrees and can cut individual household heating and cooling costs by up to 25%. Whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of our business area and beautify our community. And whereas the City of McMinnville is celebrating its 22nd year as a Certified Tree City USA as recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas in honor of Arbor Day in Oregon, three new eastern red bud trees were planted at the McMinnville High School's bear hug, along with a commemorative plaque that was with much help from the McMinnville School District, Oregon Community Trees, Trees for McMinnville and community members. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now here for I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2019 as Arbor Day. And this in the City of McMinnville. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees, our woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed to this on the 23rd day of April 2019. Signed, Scott A. Hill. Jamie?
Thank you for the proclamation. As the mayor said, McMinnville is celebrating its 22nd consecutive year as a Tree City USA community. And I work very closely with the landscape review committee here for the city and I'm proud to be a part of this committee and see their dedication to promoting trees and the community forest that McMinnville is so very proud of and continues to enjoy on a daily basis. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Jamie. And later tonight, we're gonna have a resolution that is going to put into paper our, our trees that are appropriate, whether they be small, medium, or large, for the streetscapes throughout the city. Well done, well reviewed. This committee is an active, good committee doing the right types of things for this community. So, thank you. And our last proclamation this evening is a proclamation that is the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And so Chuck, and we have your committee. Joan, thank you for coming up. Proclamation, whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation, a nonprofit dedicated to protecting America's historic buildings, landscapes, and neighborhoods, established an annual celebration of historic preservation across the country. And whereas this celebration, known as the National Historic Preservation Month, was first established and observed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in 1973. And whereas historic, or National Historic Preservation Month is now observed in the month of May every year throughout the country. Whereas the City of McMinnville has a rich history as the primary social and economic center of Yamhill County and region. And whereas the McMinnville Downtown Historic District, the economic center of the city, focuses on Third Street and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas the City of McMinnville promotes and protects its historic buildings and sites through a locally adopted historic resource inventory managed by the Historic Landscape Committee, which includes numerous buildings and sites dating back as far as 1853. And whereas the protection of our historic resources enhances the economic vitality of our community, beautifies our built environments, and instills in our community members a sense of pride in the historic importance of the City of McMinnville. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month in the City of McMinnville and urge all citizens to celebrate Historic Preservation Month and support efforts to protect our valued historic resources throughout the city. And in witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed to this, the 23rd day of April 2019. Signed, Scott A. Hill. Chuck?
The work of the Historic Landmark Committee has been to raise public awareness of the historic landmarks, architecture, homes, buildings in McMinnville, and also to identify historic landmarks. And the importance of having this preservation going on, a good example of that is the Atticus Hotel, which has beautifully knit together history of McMinnville and economic development. So, I think it's a very important work that this committee is doing. I also went to, and I'm not including myself in this command, the committee members that are on this committee, they, it's, I have actually been on an office committee since 1973 when it was first put together. And this is the strongest group of people that has ever worked on this committee. So, and one other thing, we, I think we have this walking tour book, and if any of you have guests this spring, this summer, and want to show people around and talk about the buildings that are not only in the historic district, but further out, pick it up and you'll have just a vast amount of knowledge and you can, your, your guests will just love it. I can tell you that. I've taken several groups on tours and people just love knowing about the city and who was involved and how it got here and where the flour mill was and where the horses stayed and all of this stuff. So, and also, our meetings are open and you're all welcome to.
Thank you, you too. It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize events, groups within the city with a proclamation. Well, this takes us now to our invitation to the citizens for public comment. And anyone that's interested in the audience to address the council may do so. We have public comment cards. I have a number here. If you'd like to speak to us and you haven't filled out a card, if you could do that, get that over to Melissa, we'd appreciate it. You may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some, at some future date. We limit your comments to three minutes. I'll raise my hand when the three minutes is up. And so our first comment tonight, Joya Goodrum. Welcome, Joya.
Good evening, Joya Goodrum, President and CEO of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce at 417 Northwest Adams Street here in McMinnville. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, guests. I want to thank you for listening to the concerns of your business community at last council meeting. We have had many businesses over the past two weeks express their desire for change and anticipate you will take the necessary action to address the concerns expressed to you. Upon looking over tonight's agenda, we are happy to see that the business license fee discussion is not being considered. As we have discussed with many of you, we will be not endorsing that fee. And lastly, we want to thank the city for supporting Lemonade Day. With the proclamation this evening, we have 180 kids that have registered and expect to exceed the 208 that participated last year. As you know, this program helps grow the next generation of entrepreneurs. The support of our businesses, city leaders, citizens, and the school district is integral to the success of the program and ultimately, the development of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Joya. Our next individual, Dan Hilbert. Dan, if you'd come up.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hilbert. I reside at 875 Northeast 19th Street. Tonight, I have just a small favor to ask of your city council. I'll only take a couple of minutes. I'm asking that the City of McMinnville grant equal acts, equal status to those of us who have no religion. Under the current roster of protected statuses, it does not include people that do not have any religion. I would like to add just three words to that. Or no religion. The city council decides that it's right and just, then there will be only the third city in the nation to recognize that nonbelievers should be in the protective status. Just recently, the Portland City Council unanimously agreed that nonbelievers should have the protections against discrimination in a variety of, in a variety of services such as public accommodation, employment opportunities, and public housing. As it stands now... opportunities, and public housing. As it stands now, a judge could decide, using his or her discretion, whether or not atheists or nonbelievers are in the protected status. Such a case could ultimately end up in the Supreme Court. This change will prevent that from happening. I'm not asking for anything special. Just equality in the eyes of the law. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we would call on Brad Bassett. Welcome, Brad.
Hello. Thanks for taking time to hear me. I'd like to address the council regarding the ruling made by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals regarding sleeping outside and homelessness. Reading through the decision, it is clear to me that the issue is with stopping people from sleeping outside when no other shelter is available. The issue in McMinnville isn't sleeping outside, but sleeping in tents and RVs in a camping way. If the city refuses to delineate the difference between homelessness and camping, how will we stop random visitors and tourists from parking their RV or tent on Third Street or other areas that would be quite desirable for anybody willing to camp? I would like to read a section of it to you that I think makes it pretty clear the delineation between camping and homelessness. It says, "Our holding is a narrow one." This is from the Martin v. City of Boise. "Our holding is a narrow one. Like the Jones Panel, we in no way dictate to the city that it must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless, or allow anyone who wishes to sit, lie, or sleep on the streets at any time and at any place. We hold only that so long as there's a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds in the shelters, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying, or sleeping in public. That is, as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people from sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise they had a choice in the matter. We are not alone in reaching this conclusion. As one court has observed resisting-" Sorry, actually, I'm going to stop there and move on to-" Yeah. We are not alone. As one court has observed resisting the need to eat, sleep, or engage in life-sustaining activities is impossible. Avoiding public places when engaging in this otherwise innocent conduct is also impossible. As long as the homeless plaintiffs do not have the single place where they can lawfully be, the challenge ordinances as applied to them effectively punish them for something for which they may not be convicted under the Eighth Amendment, sleeping, eating, and other innocent conduct. I'd like to point out that it is quite different what's going on in Dustin Court in Marsh Lane. We have people that are sleeping not outdoors, they're sleeping in RVs. To me, that's a pretty clear difference between camping and what this talks about, sleeping outdoors. One of the comments they placed underneath said, "Naturally, our holding does not cover individuals who do have access to adequate temporary shelter, whether because they have the means to pay for it, or because it is realistically available for them for free, but who choose not to use it. Nor do we suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside, even where shelter is unavailable. An ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular times or in particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible." From what I've read in the newspaper, you guys are stating that there's nothing that can be done about this, because they're allowed to sleep outside. But to me, they're not sleeping outside. We have people in tents, we have people in RVs. I'm not seeing people sleeping outside, and I think it's a clear difference. Camping is something that can be done inside, or camping can only be done outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
We'll talk later.
Okay. Aiden Bassett. Aiden. Aiden's been before us before, so it's good to have him back.
Hello. Thanks for letting me come up and address my comment. I'm going to be speaking on homeless. Homeless are a huge problem in Oregon, most of all McMinnville. Homeless even physically threaten business owners to get free food. And what does the city council do about it? No citizen of McMinnville should feel threatened. This council's job is to serve the citizens of McMinnville. The citizens of McMinnville. Do you, the council members, believe that this is being accomplished? Mr. Mayor and councilors, I'd like to know when I can have my park back.
Thank you. Scott?
I've got two tax assessments after this I'm going to give to you.
Okay.
My name is Scott Thorokelson. I'm a manager of the Fastenal store back in the industrial park. And a couple of weeks ago, I was going out to lunch with another manager. And we were going down Riverside, and he goes, "Holy cow, I am so glad I didn't move to McMinnville." And I go, "What are you talking about?" He goes, "Man, I got the place here, but I was going to get a place down on Riverside, and if I would have had to drive by Riverside every single day and look at what is just continually to grow and grow and grow, I'd be growing, pulling my hair out." He bought a place in Willamina, and he's very excited about it. One of the things that, last time I was here, I had a video, and I didn't, I forgot, I wrote it down. I was all ready to say it, but I forgot to tell you. The first time I videoed, I counted 47 things. That's a car, that's an RV, that's a structure, that's a whatever. If you go back and look at my video, you'll hear me count. If there's, we didn't really crank it up, but you'll hear me count one, two, three, okay? First time I did it, 47. Next time, 64. The one I just showed you was 79. It is growing, and we are not doing anything about it. Last thing I, what I did was, it goes, "I am missing something here. If I was a squatter, why, I would squat like in Discovery Park, because there is a bathroom right there. Why are people squatting like on Fourth Street? Why are, can they stay there unlimited amount of times? Why are people in Dustin and there for months and months and months? And they have established floors, and they've been there for months." Well, it's because I realize it's the right of way. And I don't know if a lot of these people realize it, but what the issue is, is that we will allow people to stay on right of ways, which is, if it's been developed or not. So, out by Dean's place, out by the fence, that is not a developed right of way. But the perimeter around the place, that's the eight-foot public. And so, that's why the city is telling the police department to let these people stay and squat as long as they want to. That's why people are staying on Fourth Street. Sum it all up, any perimeter property, any sidewalk, anywhere in McMinnville, you can stay unlimited amount of time, and the police will always allow you to do so. Scary. So, I'm trying to figure out a solution to this darn thing. So, I said, "I need a place," because the problem is, is that if you want to squat, we don't have a place to squat. So, I feel, let's find a place to squat, and then we can say, "If you want to squat, you can squat, but don't squat over here. You're going to squat over here." So, what I came up with are two different locations. They're both owned by the city of McMinnville. One is right behind Wastewater. It's 3450.
Oh.
This is my three minutes. All right. So, it is 68, it is 68 acres of land owned by the city of McMinnville, right behind, okay? We can make that. The other one is right out by Crookshank Roads. Again, there's a left, it's surprising that Crookshank goes right down the middle of this property on the east and the west. I know you were saying you're concerned, but it goes, "All right, the west side. Forget about that. Let's look at the east side of this property." This is what, 58 acres? Both of them undeveloped? Look at them.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks. I may butcher the next name, but Sima Petchik?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I've got, I've got, I've got you. There's someone out. Is it Sima Petchik? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Simona Pravchak. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm going to talk to you guys basically as a mom. We moved out here to McMinnville from Dundee because of the schools, because Newburgh High School offers better choices for my children, my older children, than Newburgh did, especially like the ESA program. We've been here a couple of years, and I can't take my kids to the park anymore. It's very sad. They want to go. They asked me to go, and I can't take them, because there's a lot of needles around. And they're scared. We have the mentally ill that are screaming at them. And we pay taxes for this. The other issue is, is that the even, like the Newburgh, the McMinnville library, it isn't as safe as the Newburgh library for the kids. So, I drive all the way to Newburgh to take my kids to the library, because they could use the bathroom safely. In McMinnville, they can't. And it's sad. I have to use up gas and time to go all the way to Newburgh, just so my kids could get library books so that they'll be safe, which is sad. The other thing is going on with the needles. I don't know who supplies the needles. I don't know how the city has it arranged. I don't know how people are, I agree with people who use IV drugs being able to get clean needles so they don't, you know, spread disease. I totally understand that. But at the same time, there has to be a system in place to get those needles back, so that our children aren't put at risk for catching other diseases. What's happening here isn't right. It's not right to the abusers, and it's not right to the people that don't abuse. We've created a system that is, it's wrong for both parties. It's not helping anybody. And I wish that you guys, we voted you guys in. I wish you guys would come up with some kind of solution, at least to make people that, like, for me, the needle thing is a huge thing. If you get a needle, you have to be responsible. You know? I mean, that's common sense to me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Cecilia Pike?
You may report.
Yep.
All right.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Cecilia Pike. I live on Riverside Drive. So, I've seen this homeless camping RV-whatever problem, that we're calling it, from the beginning to what it is now. What we should really be calling it is a public health crisis. I have seen people defecating openly in the field that I think is privately owned. We have found needles in our neighborhood. They're openly drinking and using drugs in front of my children. We can no longer get down to Joe Dancer Park reasonably, because it's been restricted to one-way traffic. If I, as a property owner, conducted those sort of activities on my own property, I would face fines, liens. You folks would pay to clean it up, and you would put a lien on my property. So, why are they enjoying these privileges when I, as a property owner, don't get the same privileges? It doesn't make sense. In other states where they're, in cities where they're allowing this to go on, they are having cases of typhoid fever. So, medieval diseases that have been completely wiped out are now resurging because of the lack of sanitation and hygiene. It's not fair to these people. It's not fair to me and my family. My family and I enjoy riding our bikes down to Third Street, where we drink, we eat, we have fun, we buy things. This summer, we won't be doing that, because we cannot safely pass through this health crisis. We have been chased by stray dogs, which again, they're enjoying privileges that I would not enjoy, because my dogs must be leashed, licensed, vaccinated, all of this. Their dogs are not. So, I don't, I, I can't afford this cut, nope. So, my family and I won't be patronizing local business the same way that we have in the past, because we can't risk riding through that area. The livability of this community is not the same. My family and I are now considering moving out of this community. We don't have to live here. My husband's job allows us to live wherever we want. We choose to live here in McMinnville. We chose McMinnville. We have no family here, nothing. We chose McMinnville because we loved the community. We loved the feeling here. The feeling is changing, and if it's going to continue to change, then we will have no choice but to leave. And we are good members of the community.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. That takes us now to advice and informational items. We will take on the reports of councilors on the committee and board assignments. And I think I'll start with Adam, and work our way this way. Adam?
I'd appreciate it if those folks who were speaking on this issue would just stick around for the, for this section, because we are going to speak to some of your issues right now, and at least you'll get a chance to, to know you've been heard. Thank you.
Go ahead, Adam.
Airport Commissioner, we haven't met, but you guys will see a few resolutions in your packet tonight about replacing our no lead tank with the new tank instead of refurbishing, and the costs involved in that, and why we need to move forward with that. YCOM, we met. Looks like we'll be looking at our standard 3% increase to dues. And Dundee has stepped away from the table at this point in time of coming on board. There seems to be a disconnect with their council versus their city manager and fire chief. So, hopefully we can work to mend those fences and get them back to the table. But for this fiscal year, we don't anticipate them being a partner. Outside of that, I don't know when else to bring this up, but I would like to have a council-wide discussion about the testimony we took last meeting, and the testimony we heard tonight, and solutions that all of us could, could do to address that. I definitely feel that there's stark contrast on both sides, but there's also, this, these chambers were packed, and there is a strong opportunity for collaboration, and there was some middle ground that I heard through the testimony of everybody. So, I would like us to work on that middle ground and work towards solutions that are outside of housing. I think it's more than just housing, and I think that that's what we heard, is we need to look at solutions past housing and remove the Wild West from the community around here, you know? Make sure everybody's playing by rules, and make sure that it's a livable, healthy environment for everyone, whether you have a house or not.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
Colleagues, thank you. I have two related aspects to my report this evening. The first relates to my role on the council of governments, and some possible changes that are coming to our regional continuum of care, which is the regional group through which the federal government distributes its funds for housing and human services. Yamhill County is currently part of the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, which is along with the 27 of our state's small counties. And this makes it difficult to get projects funded in this part of the valley, since we're competing with those counties in Southern Oregon and Eastern Oregon for federal funding dollars. Those counties tend to band together in Southern and Eastern Oregon for project funding, and it makes it harder for us to get projects started here in this region. So, Marion and Polk County are proposing to set up a new tri-county continuum of care along with Yamhill County. That would ensure that we're not competing with those other regions for federal dollars, and it'll make it easier for our tri-county region to start getting coordination and project funding for regional housing and homelessness needs. To the point about Marsh Lane as it relates to this, in our continuum of care in terms of federal dollars, we get about $500 per person for the category of folks on Marsh Lane. That money goes to the county, not to the city. So, changing this continuum of care would dramatically increase the resources that are available to local governments in this area to deal with the problem. I think it makes sense for our region to do this, and I recommend that we sign as a city a letter of support in favor of the effort. I'd also like to take a couple of minutes to talk about the issue of homelessness in our community. First, I'd just like to say to people who have come here and given their testimony, we on the council are as impacted by this as you are. My daughter goes to the same library that your kids go to. My daughter can't go to the same parks that your kids can't go to. We have needles in front of my house, too. We're downtown. We experience- We experience this as much as anybody. It's heartbreaking. It's angering. It's maddening. We are so frustrated on this council with the degree of the problem that has descended on this city and on this region. To say that anybody on this council wants what is happening is just false. But we're limited in terms of what we can do about that. But I would like to talk a little bit about what I think we can do going forward. So as we've discussed in this council, Oregon now leads the nation in unsheltered homelessness. Three years ago, we were number four. Two years ago, we were number two. And now we're number one. It's about the only thing I can think of that our state leads the country in right So we've been dealing with this on the council for three years at least, four years before I came on the council. Our city's been trying to manage the growing problem of RV and tent camping within city limits for a long time while this problem has been growing. Prior to me joining the council, our city lost an enforcement action against RV camping. That was before the Boise decision. That was in our local courts that we lost that attempted enforcement action. So the regulatory framework is hard. It's not easy. We have to respect the constitutional rights of people, the stuff that folks see as trash, our other people's possessions. If we were to seize that, we would have to do something with it, keep it for a period of time that costs money, return it to them after they get done with their criminal proceedings. It's complicated. It's expensive. On the public safety side, we've increased the number of patrol officers in the city. We've assigned a mental health crisis intervention officer to help address this growing issue. In 2008, we spent considerable time and resources in changing city codes to clean up the parking garage downtown. We have started a park ranger program to help deal with the park situation in the downtown core. We've also taken action to ban camping in the public right-of-way and on sidewalks and in streets, but our ability to enforce those laws against camping and human activity that comes with it, human activity being defecating, eating, all those things that we see, that we don't want to see on our public streets. It's limited, severely restricted by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and then reaffirmed just this month by the Ninth Circuit. And we're limited by our lack of shelter capacity as a community. If we had more shelter capacity as a community, we could do more to enforce the laws that we have. So those of us who want to test the decision will do well remember that we did lose an enforcement action against RV camping shortly before I came on the council. We rewrote the ordinance so that, to make it more enforceable, right before the Ninth Circuit came down with that decision. Essentially shot down those ordinances in every town that doesn't have a low-barrier shelter. So now we have a bona fide emergency. The term you used, ma'am, is the correct one. We have a health crisis on Marsh Lane. So with summer approaching, I've spent the last few months to reach out to other jurisdictions to learn how they're dealing with how homelessness is affecting their city. We're not the only ones, folks. Our rural region in Oregon is number one in the country for any rural area for unsheltered homelessness. Number one in our rural area in addition to being number one as a state. So this is not just a Portland problem. So the first thing I believe, after talking to the mayor of Corvallis, is that I believe we can enforce our restrictions on camping in the city by, if we establish time and place restrictions on camping and differentiate between camping and sleeping, as the gentleman who is here suggested. Good idea. Sleeping in the public right-of-way. Especially in the downtown core and in residential neighborhoods because I think that's what we need to prioritize in terms of public safety. I think it's essential that we take that step to make that differentiation so we can enforce those laws in the downtown core. Second, as I mentioned, I think that the camping on Marsh Lane constitutes a true public health emergency. Today is better than it was during the worst of the flare-ups. I think, Scott, you'd admit that it got up to 79 after the cold weather shelters let out. That's where they went, to Marsh Lane. A bunch of people came out of the cold weather shelters. When the county took action in Carlton, on the private land in Carlton where all those people were camping, where do you think they went? Marsh Lane. So that's why we have the flare-up. And it's spread out onto Riverside Drive. I saw it. It wasn't safe to drive through there. It was a huge mess. Well, Riverside is better. Marsh Lane is still awful, at least today when I drove through. Oh, okay. So it's a crisis. I agree with you, it's a crisis. It's a crisis. And I think our city does not have the resources to deal with the public. Let me just finish speaking, sir. From a policy standpoint, I think we need more expertise and resources than we have locally available to deal with the issue. And because that's the case, I think we need to give serious consideration, Mayor, to declaring a public health emergency and using, and using the statutory provisions that are associated with that declaration to request specific assistance from both the county, which is the primary seat of the financial resources that could come to us, and the state. Declaring a public health emergency would allow our city to engage in appropriations outside of the immediate budget process, initiate mutual aid and other cooperation agreements to accept resources from individuals and organizations, and crucially, set the stage for our city to request state and federal assistance to augment our local capacity. One immediate effect is the director of our local housing authority, Massey Casper, has said that he can use that type of declaration to give him the leverage that he needs to get grant funding for a three-to-five-year period for a staff position for a homelessness and housing Ombudsman Coordinator. That was discussed in Remy's committee a couple of days ago. The statute also specifically authorizes the government to provide emergency housing and medical treatment and take other necessary steps to protect public health and safety. This idea originated from my review of the emergency declaration that was made by several Eastern Oregon counties and other jurisdictions to free up state funds to help them deal with the influx of campers during the lunar eclipse a few years ago. It's my belief that if we could use an emergency declaration to deal with a tourism emergency, we can do that for a housing emergency, homelessness emergency. And I've been in contact with policymakers in Newburgh, Redmond, and other cities as well as people with expertise in both homelessness and this kind of health emergency. And I think that a well-thought-out declaration and request for assistance could cause other cities to join in and could be used to request additional assistance from the state. So I think that's one thing that I think we should give serious consideration to. It's a very significant step. It's not something we should take lightly. It's something that we need to do a very good job of detailing our case for resources. But I think we should seriously consider it. The last thing I want to say is I'd like to take a moment to recognize with appreciation Carl Peters, the CEO of Recology, in appreciation of how he and his company have stepped forward to help deal with the public health crisis on Marsh Lane. They've provided, most recently, solid waste disposal services. They've done that on multiple occasions to help us deal with that. And I just want to make it part of the record how much I wish, appreciate his willingness and his company's willingness to step forward and be part of the solution. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. I'll move over to Kelly. Any report?
I'm not sure you really want to hear about Visit McMinnville tonight after that. In all honesty, I would agree that we do have a public health crisis out there. I do also feel that probably we are in line for a council discussion about this issue in depth.
Speak into your mic.
Oh, at some other time. We need to sit down and as a council discuss this. There's been, I mean, we all are not happy about this situation. I do feel rather passionately about the public health circumstances. I attended the continuing care presentation today at the county. We don't know how the county will receive that particular information. Two of the commissioners indicated positive reactions to doing this continuing continuum of care, which would significantly help our area. If we pulled away and joined with Polk and Marion County, we could get our dollars per person up significantly. But it all depends on efficiencies and putting the whole package together. The only, the reason we're getting $500 per person is because we just are not presenting our case well and we're being spread over a large number of counties throughout the On an up, on a brighter note, I don't know how many minutes I have left, I wanted to talk briefly about Visit McMinnville. Visit McMinnville was awarded the Travel Oregon Best Overall Tourism Marketing Award for Visit McMinnville's brand refresh in the land of plenty advertising campaign. We're doing good work in our destination marketing organization, which I am on the committee. Visit McMinnville secured a media piece on the UFO Festival in Daily Mail, one of the UK's top read publications. Visit McMinnville placed a full-page dynamic print in Alaska Beyond, Alaska's airline in-flight magazine, to drive interest in McMinnville as a destination. Visit McMinnville will host five Portland-area food writers and influencers in the MAC Food Truck Fest on April 27th, 28th. I hope you're all planning to come out and enjoy that. Visit McMinnville is working with the BLM to secure their investment in outdoor recreation sports in the Ness Tucka River corridor, such as mountain biking trails, improved campsites, and road improvements for cyclists. Visit McMinnville is working with the arts and cultural organizations to share data and partner on projects that will make McMinnville more attractive to visitors, such as murals, arts, and events. And finally, Visit McMinnville has met with county commissioners to discuss opportunities for area destination development. For every dollar that Visit McMinnville and other advertisers spend for this area, we get it back 300-fold. So give it some thought. We're doing a lot of good work here and we'll think maybe we can figure out a way to do, deal with this other issue, too. But it's going to take everyone. It's a community problem.
Thank you, Kelly. I'll shoot down to Zach and then we'll work our way back.
A couple of ones, no major committee items reported, then I'll fill in for Adam and I are on the KOB, Kids on the Block Technical Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting and it was a really great, diverse group. And Susan Muir's got us on a fast track to have something back to you guys. I think our last meeting is June 5th, so we'll have a report out back to council on that, on what our intended actions are to move forward with sustainable financing model for Kids on the Block program. Just my major committee reports in addressing matters discussed in this period of time. Like the second note, or third note now, or fourth note to Seriously at the council level talk about the previous two meetings discussions relating to the homeless issue, as well as support Sal's effort on the continuing care letter of support to proceed on with that. At this level, I'd support that. And then second his topic on the public health emergency declaration, would be super interested in listening on that and learning more about what we can do on that as a policymaking level. That's my report.
Thank you, Zach. Remy?
Thank you. So our McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force meeting will be tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome to attend. Our agenda tomorrow includes a video conference with the City of Bend housing staff, which we've been trying to do for quite a while. So we're excited to be hosting them and learn from them and some of the work that they've done to increase affordable housing. We'll be reviewing House Bill 3349, which is a way to pull, sorry, I had it pulled up in front of me. It's a way to increase revenue that can be used for housing initiatives and homelessness by excluding some tax exemptions on second homes or third homes, so people that own multiple residences. And I have, I have a lot of different things pulled up, so I'm sorry. I had the, I had it pulled up so I could just read the first paragraph of it, which says it nice and clearly, but, but I don't see it now. And then we will be reviewing a grant that the McMinnville School District has, can even, a grant to increase some funding for homeless liaisons in the school district. We anticipate a motion to support that grant coming from our committee and hopefully that will help them get that, increase their resources to serve our homeless youth. As a reminder, just in K through eight, so just eighth grade and below, we do have 230 homeless students. And then we'll be reviewing a floating zone update. So one of our subcommittees has been working on an RFP for innovative housing pilot project. And this is being designed so that up to two areas in McMinnville could, if they had the correct zoning and they're in the correct area, could elect to participate in a program that would essentially provide transitional housing. It would allow for a tiny house village or something of that type to go in. So we've been, we've had that in development and so we'll be getting an update on that. And then, let's see. I also wanted to let you know that Champion Team, who is the managing nonprofit for our Safe Overnight Parking Program, brought in a team of volunteers a week ago and did go out to Dustin Court and Marsh Lane, organized both for garbage collection and Sharps collection. And so we were able to remove a tremendous amount of debris. Of course, McMinnville Water and Light had just done something similar on Marsh Lane, so there was, there was less on Marsh Lane, but there was quite a bit on Dustin Court that we were able to remove, including cleaning out toilets and working with individual families out there to help them clean up their, their areas. Additionally, the Housing Solutions Meeting will be on May 17th. This is a countywide effort being led by Commissioner Kula with the cities of Newburgh and McMinnville and a number of nonprofits and Providence. And Mr. Mayor, you can probably speak to it better than I have, attending those meetings. But this is, this has been an important effort that's resurfaced in, important county effort that's resurfacing because of course, as we know and as we've heard, the problem with homelessness is not just a McMinnville problem. It is not just a regional problem or a state problem. It is a problem up and down the West Coast where there are huge spikes of homelessness in every community. And in our local area, we know that to be very true from Newburgh to West Valley. So that meeting will be happening on May 17th. And then a few days ago, we also, coming out of the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee, one idea that had started, that we've begun work on is putting together a regional homeless coordinator. This would not be a city position, so this would not be a cost to the city, although I would say our, the current effort is very much being made on part by the city of McMinnville to put this together. But we also met with councilors from Newburgh and the idea would be to, and this was the meeting Sal referenced, in which the housing authority was also there and we looked at different funding sources. And we have a job description that's in the works currently and we're looking for different funding sources. And so this would be an effort to reduce some of the redundancy that we do see in, in efforts that are being made in our, in our region and to bring together some of those funding sources, so similar to what Sal was speaking about earlier. And then just as a few other reminders, as we continue our conversations about some of these issues that we're facing, huge issues that we're facing. One, I'd like to remind the council that a housing wage in the city of McMinnville, that would be the wage where a person would work 40 hours a week and spend 30% of their income on housing. A housing wage is $21.77 an hour, far below. A housing wage is $21.77 an hour, far below what the average wage is here. I would also like to remind the council that whatever monies we're able to get to work on this problem, we still have no available housing. Spending a fair amount of time working with members of our homeless community, I would also like to remind the council that these problems are quite diverse, that they are not only about addiction, which is a huge problem and is still viewed by many as an ethical choice, as opposed to a health problem, a health crisis of its own, a disease. There are tremendous problems with mental health among some of our homeless, and we severely lack mental health resources in our area, our area being the United States. And I would also like to remind the council and our public that are here tonight, or anybody that might be listening, that we do currently have multiple programs working in which there are, there is availability to get involved and immediately start reducing homelessness in our area. So, Champion Team does have a waiting list for their Safe Overnight Parking Program, and this would pair people that are living in their vehicles with property owners. They would be managing those. It would be case management that comes along with it, site management, these would be discreet installations around the community. We have currently about 10 of those, of which you're probably not aware, because they are individuals that are landless but do have an RV, a car to live in, and they're able to live discreetly, as most of our homeless would prefer to do. We also have two different community programs that are targeted on youth. Those are available through Lutheran Family Services and through YCAP, and those are opportunities to reach out directly into our, our youth population. Almost 50% of our homeless in McMinnville are youth. So, in the county, we know we have about, well, over 400 students that are, or youth that are under the age of 18. Of those, almost 100 are unaccompanied. So, that's children, the age of the children in the audience, that have no parent and no accompaniment. And these programs are a wonderful way, with case management, to give those children homes and save them from, or at least give them the opportunity to be saved from the repetition that happens with generational poverty and the criminality that can come out of a life of pure need. So, I hope that members of our community can choose to get involved in some of those programs. Currently, through the YCAP program, we have one host house in McMinnville.
Is it yours?
No, it's not mine.
Oh.
Thank you for the question.
Sir, this isn't a dialogue. Thank you. Wendy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and other counselors. I will start with my Murak meeting, which has not occurred since the last meeting. The next meeting is the first Wednesday of the month from 4 to 5 at the Community Development Building. I'd also like to address what Sal brought up this evening and what Remy followed with. There has been a lot of work that has been done, as you guys have all heard, as our citizens have heard. We, I agree with what has been said tonight about the urgent need for us to address the work that has been done already. Gives us options for being able to have solutions, that we can send people down who are in need, but there's also an urgent need for us to make our ordinances enforceable so that we can protect other citizens. I think we're very close to being able to do that in a very assertive way, and so I would like to express appreciation to Sal for all of the research that he has done, that has provided some information that enables us to have that conversation. I'd also like to thank Remy for all, and Kelly, for all of the work that they have done, because the work on the homelessness Subcommittee and affordable housing is what is going to allow us to enforce ordinances in a way that gives those that have some of these needs that we can address, an opportunity to address them. So, and I'd also like to thank the citizens who have not just come in to give feedback about what's wrong, but have taken the time to internalize the complexity of this problem, the scope of this problem that is not easy to solve, and that have come to the table with some solutions, because that's what it's going to take, is for all of us to be collaborating, because nobody has the answer. And so, but what I would like for us to at least be able to, as a council, do tonight is give a clear directive to our administration of what we'd like to see come back to us. And I'll just throw out what I would like to see. I'd like to see a, an evaluation of other ordinances, including Bend, Corvallis, Redmond, and other cities, and what they're doing in the light of the Ninth Circuit Court, and what seems to be enforceable in working in their communities. I'd like to also have a better understanding of what that emergency ordinance looks, looks like, if that would be a tool that we can use to increase our ability to move quickly on this and have other funding that will empower us to be able to, to produce effective solutions. And I'd like a, a report, I would like to include the police department's experience of, on the front line, of what they have been experiencing in their evaluation of what the problem is that we're trying to solve. So, those are the three things that I think if we can get, and that, this is really the first time we would be, have a forum for us to really talk as a council in an informed way. So, I think a lot of good will come from that, and we'll have a direction that we can go in, having this additional information and being able to talk as a council about it. So, that's my proposal, and thank everybody for their concern for McMinnville. I really appreciate it. I can tell that we all really care about what's happening to the town, on the council and our citizens. And that really comes out with regards to people being willing to come and contribute to the meetings and help work on solutions, so.
Thank you, Wendy. Very quickly, just a couple of things I've been involved in are what we're calling Highway 18 bypass meetings this coming Thursday. MWAAC, which is the Regional Transportation Meeting, was, is going to be canceled for May, but we will hold it in June. Just to touch base on an item that Remy talked about and Council President Menke talked about, is our County Housing Solution Meeting. I think we're coming up, May 17th, which will be our fourth, or will be our fourth meeting. I'll tell you, those meetings have helped us in our Consortium of Care discussion today with the county coming to the plate and becoming a partner with the city. I think we've made some significant headway because of those County Housing Solution Meetings, and so I think that's a real positive from that perspective. Looking to, we've taken quite a bit of time. Usually, we put about a three-minute reporting piece on, but tonight, you've heard from the council of our concerns, and typically, we take input in, but tonight, we've given you some of our thoughts. And so, I think the next thing I'd like to do is, Jeff and I, we've been talking, we've brought up this evening a possible, well, a need for a work session of having a discussion among the council, so we can really take a look at some of those options. And so, Jeff, if you can share just a little bit of a thought that a number of us have been having about when that might be and what we're looking at, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We've already scheduled a work session on May 14th for the council to talk about issues of camping versus sleeping, particularly in light of the Ninth Circuit's recently affirmed opinion. We also will be bringing forward the issue that was raised tonight regarding the possibility of an emergency declaration, so there'll be a work session already scheduled on that for May 14th. In addition, on May 28th, we'll be doing a community training in the afternoon, and we'll have what we hope will be a joint meeting with a number of our regional stakeholders around regional issues related to homelessness. With respect to the Continuum of Care presentation that a couple of members of the council have talked about, we'll be bringing forward a resolution of support for that action at the May 14th meeting to forward on to the Amheal County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. I think what we'll do now is just, I get a report from department heads before we get into our resolutions and ordinances this evening. Rhonda, anything from the police department? Thank you. Marcia? And Jenny? Going around. Heather? Mike? Melissa? And David? Okay. That takes, that takes us through our advice and informational items this evening. Again, counselors, thank you for your thoughtful comments and trying to keep them informational, but also as concise as you can. This evening, as we move into our agenda, our consent agenda this evening is considering an OLCC liquor license request from Full On Premise Commercial for the Farmers Lunchbox LLC DBA Conservatory Bar located at 830 Southeast First Street. Is there any counselor that would like to have anything taken off of our consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion?
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Kelly, and then Wendy has seconded. All those in favor of, of, of moving the consent agenda or approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay? The consent agenda this evening has passed six to zero. We have a number of resolutions this evening, first being Resolution Number 201926, a resolution replacing the previously established street tree list, which was Resolution Number 2016-22, with a new list of recommended, conditionally permitted, and prohibited street treats for the city of McMinnville. We talked just briefly about that during our Arbor Day, but we'll turn it over to Jamie to bring us up to speed on that. Jamie?
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. I'll refer you to the staff report that's in the meeting materials in front of you, but in short, the Landscape Review Committee, over the past several months, has been working towards updating the approved street tree list, or the recommended street tree list for McMinnville, in order to provide a more informational list, a more user-friendly list, a more comprehensive list, in the hopes of providing more diversity to the urban forest of McMinnville, and to do a better job of anticipating and avoiding conflicts with public improvements that we've been seeing so much of recently. The Landscape Review Committee, at their last meeting, voted to recommend approval of the street tree list by the city council, and as such, staff also recommends approval of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jamie?
If I could comment?
Go ahead.
I just think this is a marvelous document, and you've done a beautiful job of providing very good information in very succinct manners. I really greatly appreciate the Landscape Review Committee. They do great work, and I think this is an example of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I also just have a comment. I just, I love it. I mean, it's so accessible. Not being someone that has enjoyed all the background of the meetings, I think I'm going to use it for my yard trees, too. It's just so much more user-friendly than the other one was, just being a list, and I think that that's going to make a huge difference for, for people being able to select trees that are appropriate for their location. So, well done.
Thank you. That's one of the goals, is to be able to help people select the right tree for the right place.
Remy?
So, what if, for instance, I, I don't see where it is here, but I noticed that some of the trees that have been removed were like fruiting trees? Right? Did I?
Are you referring to the ornamental pear tree that was no?
It might be the ornamental pear. Is that the only fruiting tree that was removed?
Well, fruiting trees were previously not, they were on the prohibited list, and they remain on the prohibited street tree list because of the mess that the commercial fruit creates when it comes to bear and then drops on the right of way.
Could you maybe give her an example of like the oak trees or something?
Sure.
That we were talking about?
Sure.
About a month ago?
I, in the staff report, it notes that the ornamental pear tree is no longer, it was previously a recommended street tree, but has been left off of the list in this update, because the ornamental pear tree in particular has structural issues that create weak branching patterns, and in a number of neighborhoods where we have those trees, as street trees, we've seen widespread breakage and damage, causing considerable concern for safety in the public right of way. And so, as a...
But they have a tree, though, and it's not working out, and people have come and testified. You provide an alternative for replacement when those trees need, have to be replaced.
Yes. One of the, the Landscape Review Committee creates street tree improvement plans when there are identified problems, like the ornamental pear trees, that will allow replacement street trees of a more suitable variety.
But there's no trees with edible that are allowed currently?
Not the, the commercial fruiting and commercial nut-producing trees are prohibited on this list, as they can, as they were on the previous list.
Now, those can be in your yard, but
For, for street trees.
They can't be street trees.
As, as street trees in the public right of way. That's correct.
Okay. I like the accessibility of the document as well. And then, the other thing I noticed, I think there were about four of these were native, but the list, there must be, I don't know how many are on here, 30 different, more? More than 30, 40 different trees, but only four native species? How do you take that into consideration when you're creating a list like this? Or how important is the promoting using native species?
Sure. Well, native species are, you know, well-adapted to the region's climate, and, and as we were going through, and as the committee was going through identifying and, and looking at the tree species to include on the list, there was a big discussion about native, native trees in particular, like native oak, native ash trees. And there's, for example, the native ash. Ash in general have a susceptibility to ash-borer insect, and there's some concern that if ash-borer becomes prevalent in the community, it's fairly limited to the Midwest and East Coast at this point, that it could threaten the native ash. And so, that was a, an example of, of one that we left off the list because of a potential impact by insect damage. But other, other trees may not have met the characteristics of having a single trunk or bore too much fruit, or made, you know, produced a mess in the, in the public right of way that it may have led to more maintenance or more issues. So, we're, the committee was pretty selective in choosing trees that were appropriate and met the criteria that had been set forth for street trees.
So, would you say, when you're kind of looking at this document, that, that if you were to re- you were to read the categories left to right, minima planter width, underwires, mature height, canopy width, tree form, flowers, fall color, native, that that was kind of the, that would mimic how the, what, I'm kind of, I'm trying to figure out kind of how you got to the list that you got to, and what, what was important criteria for you. And so, and my question is specific to the native species, because of course, you know, it seems to me common sense that you would promote native species. Of course, we can't go through them exhaustively here. So that's why I'm just trying to understand kind of how you set up, or what you're like, how you ranked things in terms of importance just in creating this.
Sure. Yeah, I think that certainly some of the, the physical limiting characteristics of the planter width being able to support certain sized trees was one of the primary considerations. The height and mature size of the trees is a limiting characteristic for selecting the right tree for the right place that we had to consider. And so suitability for under the wires or the size of the trees. And moving past some of those physical limiting characteristics, we got into some of the characteristics that you would then be able to select a tree based on the characteristics of the tree that you're, you're looking for. So whether it be you want a tree with great fall color, that's on the list. If you want a tree with a particular bloom time or bloom color, that's on the list. If you want a particular tree that's a native tree, that's on the list. So once we get past the, kind of the physical, or the physical limiting factors, then it provides the information to be able to select.
Okay. And my last question is just that, once this is approved, as I'm assuming it will be, then, so what happens with trees that aren't on the list now? Are you going to go back and try to get those trees actively removed? And, no?
No.
And does this have any bearing on any of the other conversations that have happened about the downtown trees?
Conversations regarding...
Well, what, three months ago or so, there was some conversation in here, questions that were in regards to, you were going to bring in an outside arborist to do some consulting?
Oh, as, as part of the Third Street, Streetscape?
Yes.
Project? Yes. Well, that, that's been done separately, but certainly, you know, looking forward down that project, if new street trees become necessary on Third Street, then certainly they would be pulled from this list.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Leave you alone.
Sal?
Just, just have one quick comment. The only kind of tree we have on this list that I have ever gotten complaints about from residents is the Gingko Biloba tree. And it's because of the stench of the fruit when it drops. And I, I just am curious and slightly disappointed that the tree made the list again this year. So just, that's the, that's the only comment that I had.
Yeah, so you'll notice that on the prohibited, prohibited tree species is the Gingko Biloba, but in parentheses, it says the female only. That particular tree, the female version of the tree is...
We spent 20 minutes talking about...
The odor is...
Thank you for dealing with that. I really appreciate it.
But the male, the male selection of that tree is a spectacular, spectacular tree, which is on the recommended.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-26. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-26 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our next resolution, 2019-27, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the Airport Maintenance Fund. And Marcia, we'll call on you to update us on this.
If, if I may, I wonder if you would like discussion on Resolution 2019-29, which actually discusses the replacement of the tank at the airport prior to my two budgetary resolutions?
Okay. Okay, because 2019-29 authorizes us to do it, and then we'll need to make the transfer. Is that correct? So I will take that out of order, and we will consider Resolution 2019-29, a resolution amending a contract with Mascot Equipment for the 100 LL fuel tank at the McMinnville Municipal Airport. That's Project 2018-7. Mike, if you can update us with the information that we've received on the fuel tanks out at the airport, and I see Rich is here, if we need to call on him also. Go ahead.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I will refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet regarding the issues with the fuel tank, as well as a proposed change order to the existing contract, a copy of your former resolution declaring an emergency regarding this matter, and the existing public contract that we have with Mascot Equipment. You will recall that you issued an emergency contract to Mascot to repair the 100 low lead fuel tank at the airport in December. We, post award of that contract, proceeded to work with the contractor to prep the tank for repair. Parts were ordered, tank was prepped, and at the time that the lining contractor arrived to line the tank, they discovered a crack in the sump in the tank, in the inner hole, and that crack had allowed fuel to leak into the space between the inner and exterior hole. And was certainly, since they had the tank empty and prepped to line, was leaking back into the tank. And so, at that point, it was determined that there was really no safe, cost-effective way to repair that crack. Something about welding with fuel, I'm not sure, but it sounded fairly dangerous. My suggested repair of the spray of the Flex Seal didn't go over too well either, but Rich, in all seriousness, Rich and Pot Cake, the fixed base operator, at that point changed gears and in earnest began to work with Mascot on a solution that would, in the most expedient way, get 100 low lead tank on the airport. And so fortunately, the equipment that was ordered for the existing tank is transferable to a new tank. Mascot has a tank in production that they have allocated to us upon execution of the change order this evening for the additional costs, for the additional equipment, the delivery of the new tank, the demolition and hallway of the old tank. As soon as we execute that change order, hopefully in the morning, they'll get the remainder of the parts on order, have a four to six week lead time on those parts, and then the, the new tank will be delivered and installed at the airport. They're confident that without any other unexpected issues, that they'll be able to deliver in the timeframe that was in that emergency contract you originally awarded. So, Rich is here this evening. I'd like to publicly thank him for his work on this. It's been a complex, complicated, difficult project, and it certainly has a huge impact to users at the airport, and we recognize that. But Rich and his work with Mascot Equipment have a, I think, feasible, affordable, given the resolutions you'll hear from Marcia, a solution that does provide us new infrastructure at the airport that'll have a 30-year warranty. So with that, unless there are any questions of me or Rich, the staff would recommend that you adopt that resolution authorizing the change order to Mascot Equipment's contract.
And that additional cost looks to be 62, 253, 13?
That's correct, and that includes an estimated freight charge, so that amount may vary a little bit depending on actual freight costs, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Mike, I realize this is the same size as the old tank, but was there any thought given to, over the 30-year serviceable lifespan of this tank, if we needed to go bigger, or if this tank was really too big to begin with, and it would have been cheaper to go a little bit smaller?
I'll, you know, I'll defer to Rich to answer specifics about that, but I've not heard concerns about the 100 low lead tank being either too large or too small. There have been discussions about the need for perhaps additional Jet A fuel at the airport, and so we are in discussions with the fixed base operator regarding maybe their option of purchasing another Jet A tank and providing it at the airport, so that there would be more Jet A fuel available. So, Rich, did you have anything you want to add to that?
The other question I had was regarding the 30-gallon companion tank. Is that something we had on our old tank, or is that just a new technology? Is it obviously needed, I'm guessing, but what's the benefit?
I'm not going to wing that. I'm going to let Rich explain to you what that 30-gallon containment tank does, and it allows us to, out of the sump, recover fuel, and, and we're not wasting fuel like had been happening in the past.
That's correct. What it does is when they, every day they have this sump tank, they're basically separating fuel and water might be in there. Well, in the past, we had no place to put that. So this reclaimed tank allows us to basically re-filter that fuel and use the fuel, put it back in the main tank. So there's no extra fuel laying around or anything like that. So it's pretty important to have on the water panel, too.
Awesome. That's... For questions on my end?
Okay. Adam, any other questions? Hearing none, then, again, we're on Resolution 2019-29. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution Number 2019-29 passes unanimously six to zero. That will now take us back to Resolution 2019-27, and so Marcia, if this would be that inter-fund loan from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the Airport Maintenance Fund?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. There are these two additional resolutions on the agenda tonight that are related to the amendment to the contract of replacing the fuel tank at the airport. The first resolution authorizes the inter-fund loan from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the Airport Maintenance Fund. As discussed by Mr. Bissett, there were unanticipated additional costs that were associated with the fuel tank, and the airport fund does not currently have sufficient resources or appropriations to pay for that additional cost. However, the Wastewater Capital Fund does have reserve funds that are available to loan to the airport fund. The ORS 294.468 does allow the local government to loan money from one fund to another, provided that the loan is authorized by an official resolution of the governing body. So this first resolution authorizes the loan of $100,000 from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the airport fund. I do want to point out that the loan will equal the amount that is needed for this project, and $100,000 is probably much more than will be needed. But we decided to put that in the resolution, talking with Mike about that, to make sure that we provided sufficient funds as were needed to finish the project. The resolution sets the interest rate at 2.75% per annum, which was the interest rate at the LGIP at the end of March 2019. And it also provides for repayment of the loan in five annual installment payments of $21,680. The ORS does say that for a capital loan, which this is, that the loan has to be repaid in no more than 10 years. Looking at the funds available at the airport, we're estimating that that loan can be paid off in five years.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions of Marcia or comments?
Marcia, I just had a question from the side of the wastewater, the wastewater fund. Was this, are these funds for a project that is projected to happen outside of that timeframe, so there's not a risk of them needing the capital before that time? Is that why we're confident we can loan those funds?
I believe that's the case, but I would refer that to Mike if he has any other comments about that.
Sure. It's a foundation of the council's adopted wastewater financial model that, in addition to covering anticipated operation and maintenance costs and planned capital costs, we're also developing a reserve so that at the end of the financial model planning period, 2023, 24, we have a sizable reserve there that allows us to address future capital needs in anticipation with us moving forward with growth plans through the planning department's multifaceted efforts that they have underway.
So the next phase, that's way out. So we're flexible with those funds because of that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-27.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Kelly, seconded by Sal. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution Number 2019-27 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our next resolution, which will be Resolution Number 28, 19-28, a resolution making a budgetary transfer of resources and appropriation authority for fiscal year 2018, 19, in the Wastewater Capital Fund and the Airport Maintenance Fund. And so Marcia, if you could, it's just a continuation of our discussion. Go ahead.
Yes. So having authorized that loan from Wastewater Capital to the airport, this resolution is actually the, kind of the housekeeping resolution that allows us to do that loan. So the, the first part is that the resolution transferring from Wastewater Capital to the airport, so in the Wastewater Capital Fund, we would move 100,000 from the contingency in Wastewater Capital, which does leave a sufficient contingency in that fund. Move from contingency to transfers out appropriation, and then on the other side, in the airport fund, we increase transfers in from the Wastewater Capital and increase the capital outlay appropriation to allow the, pay for the cost of the contract. So we're moving from contingency to transfers out in wastewater, and then increasing transfers in in airport, and increasing the capital outlay appropriation in airport.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will then ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-28.
I so move.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-28 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to Resolution Number 2019-30, a resolution providing and approving a form of intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, by and between the cities of McMinnville, Oregon, and the Amity Fire Protection District. And we'll call on Fire Marshal Debbie McDermott and Operations Chief Amy McFann to come and present to us. Welcome, you two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors for hearing us.
Yes, thank you. As you're aware, this resolution is the next step in the big picture regarding collaborative efforts between neighboring departments and McMinnville Fire, and increasing the service to the community. Chief Lightfoot has briefed the council about the value of these relationships in the past. Additionally, Mr. Mayor, Council President, and City Manager have been involved in some of, some of the foundational conversations, along with the Amity Rural Board. Also, as you may have learned recently, in some information that was leaked to the newspaper, specific to the proposed feasibility study that is in the current draft budget, there is a potential for a feasibility study looking at the value of partnering with our neighboring departments. And we do have a large amount of interest should that pass. I acknowledge that you haven't been presented with that yet. Just another example of how we're looking at several different ways to partner and to improve service. And I'll let Chief McDermott... And I'll let Chief McDermott speak to the contract itself.
Okay. So I'm going to just briefly cover the bullet points for the contract, as you've all had opportunity, probably multiple times, to review it. But basically, the intergovernmental contract with Amity will contain administrative services to the city of Amity, as well as provide us, as collaboratively with, a training officer who will be mostly housed in Amity, but will also provide training services for both districts. It'll also allow our ambulance service, which has been down there for a year and a half, almost two years now, to continue from eight to five. The total contract cost to Amity, which will, can fund completely the training, Division Chief Training Officer for this collaboration, is $188,500. There's also in the contract written a, up to a 3% CPI per year for the contract, also a 90-day out clause for both sides of the contract in case this collaboration doesn't work. Are there any questions?
So we'll open it up for questions, comments. I know we've been talking about this for a number of years, and we've gone down the path of other fire districts, but I can tell you, as Jeff and Kelly and myself met with the, their fire board, they were very excited all the way around to contend, to merge this together. I think we've had a, as we've indicated, about a year and a half of having the ambulance down there and that working relationship. It's given us great coverage, it's given us a little more revenue, this gives us more revenue, so I'm very excited about that. But any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none, then, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution number 2019-30.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution number 2019-30 passes unanimously six to zero.
Thank you. May I make one more comment?
Sure.
I'd like to publicly acknowledge Chief Lightfoot for all his work over the last probably two to three years to make this happen. It's been a lot of effort on his part, and pulling this off is really substantial.
Well, really, a passion and a foresight, because as we know, I think this is going to be the future of creating fire districts, because there just can become too top-heavy with administrative costs, and if we can bring that together, the end result is bringing more services to the fire district. And from, like I said, from my perspective, I'm very, very excited. So thank you, everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Amy? Okay, that takes us to an ordinance this evening, our only ordinance, and this will be the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5068. And so we will now consider this, and I will ask if there's any counselor that objects to reading this ordinance by title only. If not, David, would you read the first reading of ordinance number 5068 by title only?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5068, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to adopt a historic preservation plan and to add new goals and policies related to the historic preservation plan in Chapter Three, Cultural, Historical, and Educational Resources.
Thank you, David. Chuck, we'll call on you to update us. The report was really thick, and reading through that was, but a lot of good work, so go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I was most of your packet this evening, so I'm also last on the agenda and the only one with a PowerPoint, so I'll go through it quickly. If you have any questions, just let me know at the end. So this is a comprehensive plan text amendments that would adopt a historic preservation plan for the city of McMinnville. It was developed with our Historic Landmarks Committee in great detail, but just going through the action before you tonight with the ordinance, it is the comprehensive plan text amendment. A legislative hearing was held with Planning Commission, and they made this recommendation to you as the city council for final consideration. So the historic preservation plan, the goal and the intent behind it kind of was driven by our Historic Landmarks Committee in the past few years, starting to meet more regularly and start doing more work outside of just reviewing applications, and they were looking for some guidance on activities to continue to work on for the city's historic preservation program. So we applied for a certified local government grant and got grant funding to complete the planning process, and the goal of the plan was to guide our historic preservation program for the next 15 to 20 years. We were able to hire a consultant with those grant funds to help with that process. In addition, there are some recent Oregon administrative rules that call for historic preservation plans and local governments' comprehensive plans, so that's the action we'd be taking tonight. So these updated rules are what came out of Supreme Court case not too long ago and the rulemaking and what led to the city updating our policies and regulations about two years ago. But they also call for cities developing a local historic context statement and also a historic preservation plan. So the action before you tonight is supported by that Oregon administrative rules as well. So just in terms of the process, we went through some public outreach as we completed the plan through January and through August of 2018. We had a couple of public meetings, an online survey, and then a bunch of stakeholder interviews that were held with individual people like property owners, businesses in the downtown, that kind of thing. The Historic Landmarks Committee was very involved in the process throughout the way. They held multiple meetings with the consultants to hold discussions and talk about their goals and opportunities to be included in the plan. They reviewed the final plan in September. They had some recommended additions to the historic context chapter. This was after the consultant was offline, so staff made some of those final changes and brought that back to them in December of 2018, and they recommended it be forwarded on for consideration by the Planning Commission and the city council. So the Planning Commission held their public hearing in March, and they've recommended the plan on to you for final consideration. So the comp plan text amendments are proposed to be made to Chapter Three, which is our cultural, historical, and educational resources chapter. We're proposing to add new goals, policies, and proposals in the historic preservation section, and then also to adopt the entire plan, which was the whole document that you received in your packet tonight, as an appendix, because it'll adopt all that background information that supports the goals and policies. So these are the planned components, the chapters that are included in the plan. There's an executive summary, introduction, historic context, a chapter on the current status of our program, and then it gets into the goals, policies, and proposals that provide some of the guiding activities for the program, and an implementation chapter and appendices. The historic context chapter touches on McMinnville's development periods, identifies five key development periods and the timeframes and the things that were going on in the city when those were occurring. It goes on to describe key architectural styles. It identifies 13 different ones, and it provides some photo examples of the different architectural styles and where they could still be seen around the city today, which I think we got a lot of good feedback on. People were interested in seeing those and kind of seeing what type of architecture their home might be, when it might have been developed. So those examples have been, got a lot of positive feedback. There provides an analysis of our current program. Overall, the consultants that we brought on were impressed with our program and the recent updates that we made, and they don't have a lot of changes to that. So the action before you tonight with our plan doesn't actually change our land use regulations in the zoning ordinance, but is more the policy-level language and guiding activities for our program and the Historic Landmarks Committee to work on in the future. So then it gets into the goals, policies, and proposals, and they're included as a chapter in the historic preservation plan. They're also proposed to be added to Chapter Three of the comprehensive plan, so that's why you see the multiple different references to the number. But just quickly, the goals are to increase public awareness and understanding of McMinnville's history and its program. Goal two is to encourage the preservation and rehabilitation of historic resources. Goal three is to document and protect historic resources, and goal four is to increase heritage tourism. Each goal has a number of policies associated with it, which are in your packet and in the decision document in detail. I just pulled out some of the key ones here. So one of the policies is about Historic Preservation Month, which we'll be working on this coming May. Increasing interpretation efforts of the city's resources and increasing and streamlining the historic preservation programs, media presence, those are all things that Historic Landmarks Committee will be working on this upcoming year. They've got a big focus on awareness for this upcoming year in their work plan. In Goal Three, Four, about encouraging preservation, just promoting the incentives that we have available to people and strengthening the integration of historic preservation in the city's land use planning program. For documenting historic resources, there's some language and policies in the plan to regularly update our historic resources inventory. This is the document that has all the listed historic resources in the city, which was completed in the 80s, and so some of the information is somewhat outdated, and so there was a recommendation that we continually work on updating that information and updating that document. Creating tools to help people through design review process, and then continuing to do Explore National Register nominations, specifically in one area where we completed a recent survey in the north of downtown residential area. Further, with the documentation of historic resources, they identified a number of areas of town that we should continue to do research and survey work, so some of those are called out up there. If we move forward with the adoption of the historic preservation plan tonight, the HLC is going to work on, starting to further some of this work, which I'll touch on in just a minute. And then the last one is related to, again, increasing heritage tourism and working with Visit McMinnville to expand visitor awareness of McMinnville's heritage and historic resources. So the final thing is the implementation plan. It's a chapter in the plan, and it organizes all the proposals, which are kind of more the activities to do, into short, medium, and long-term goals, and that'll help the Historic Landmarks Committee as they put together their work plans every year. And they have, because this was finished a few months ago, they've already put together their 2019 work plan, and if the council moves forward with adopting the ordinance before you tonight, this is the work that they'll be taking on this year. So doing some of that survey work that's identified in some of the residential areas south of downtown this time, and continuing to explore that historic district in the north side of downtown. And then, again, a lot of this other stuff is related to awareness, increasing our online presence, getting our website updated, and doing a lot of just acknowledgement and awareness of our historic resources, trying to get the word out to the community more about what's, what is already designated and what processes we have in place. We had some testimony received. We completed our public hearing notice process. We didn't get many comments from departments, but McMinnville Water and Light did have some comments and suggested amendments to the plan language, which were included in your packet. These were discussed at the Planning Commission, and they recommended adding a new proposal to respond to those. The amendments that they provided were focused on the provision of modern utility services to our historic buildings around town, which can be difficult as you're looking at updating some of those structures. So the Planning Commission acknowledged that, and so they, in responding to that comment from McMinnville Water and Light, suggested this proposal to work with utility providers to develop standards for the provision of modern utility services to serve historic resources and historic buildings. So that would go in underneath the goal of encouraging the preservation and rehabilitation of historic resources. So with that, staff's recommending the comprehensive plan text amendments that are included in the ordinance, and those are consistent, again, with the Historic Landmarks Committee's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation with those couple of minor amendments. Debbie, answer any questions that you have for me.
Let's go ahead and open it up for council discussion or questions for Chuck. Very comprehensive, that grant, we're able to do quite a bit when we've got a little money to, seed money to take us forward and come out with a great.
Yeah, it was good, and if we move forward, we've applied for another certified local government grant for this upcoming grant cycle, so that would be used to do some of the survey work and some of the outreach work that I described before.
Okay. Hearing no comments?
Just one comment real quick. I just wanted to say, in the historic preservation plan, there were several sections related to different architectural styles that you find around the city, and I was just fascinated by it. I thought that was really interesting. I had no experience with that kind of area of knowledge and just really found it very approachable and comprehensive. So someone read it, and I really liked it. Thank you, Chuck.
Well, to that point, so how many different types of architectural structures we have in this community? I mean, it's not a cookie-cutter approach even in the old days. It brings so much to the table. So I'll ask for a motion to move ordinance number 5068 to a second reading.
Still moved. Second.
A second. It's been moved by Remy and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And so I'll ask the city attorney to read ordinance number 5068, a second reading by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5068, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to adopt a historic preservation plan and to add new goals and policies related to the historic preservation plan in Chapter Three, Cultural, Historical, and Educational Resources.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5068.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly, and so I'll call on the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor President Minke?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5068 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Thank you, Chuck, and thanks for the whole department that's working on that. That is the conclusion of our meeting this evening, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.